We'll call a meeting's order. Um, Julie, go to office.
Mr. Shanta?
Here.
Hello, Dr. Christa?
Here.
Here for ten minutes.
Here.
For the same, uh, Council of St. Louis County.
Okay, fine, thank you. Flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve of the agenda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda approval, approval of the minutes.
I'll also make a motion to approve of the minutes of the July twenty eighth.
Seconded. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, committee reports, uh, economic development and tourism. Uh, right now, we're, uh, in the middle of, uh, preparing for our trip to Sacramento, and, uh, we also have another member of the Economic Development and Tourism Committee that's gonna be gone next week. We were originally talking about having a meeting September nineteenth. We'll be scheduling a meeting in October, and we'll let everyone know, uh, once we get the word back, and hit us all of the members. So, that's all I have to report for that. Um, Ms. Shanta, you wanna report on Finance Committee?
Um, I believe we haven't, no, we haven't had a meeting for a long time. Uh, the Finance Committee, um...
Well, the budget's on it.
Well, yeah, but the... This is a committee report.
Okay.
We, uh, did our final meeting, you know, with the budget, and then the, um... Mark decided that it was a good idea to start having budget workshops with the council, and we had two... We had two to go through the, through the budget, and I believe it's on the, I might have on the agenda to actually resume and board on the budget today.
Okay, thank you. Next, Public Facilities and Services. Nobody on that one right now. Uh, Airports, you wanna report?
Um, I can just report that the, uh, due to the fires, uh, in the county, uh, we had Cal Fire come in, and, uh, they initially had three helicopters stationed out there, uh, but as the fires continued on, us having one as well, uh, the Bradley Fire, uh, they brought additional helicopters in, uh, primarily because of the smoke throughout the county. Uh, Dunsborough, the Mont Airport was the best location because it wasn't as, uh, smoked in as the other one. So, we ended up closing the airport, and it's gonna be closed until the prison hours. So, uh, as of right now, the airport's closed to further their traffic and preserve just for Cal Fire.
Could you take a moment while you're on that subject to explain what we had just worked out prior to this with the Forest Service?
Yeah, fortunately, um...
So, is it the Forest Service or Cal Fire?
It's the Forest, US Forest Service.
Okay, so Cal Fire is not mainly...
They're, they're out there, but, uh, it's Cal Fire that's actually got the airport, uh, closed.
Forest Service.
Forest Service.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I flipped that.
Two different entities, Mark. They don't always, you know, play nice together either.
Yeah. But, uh, fortunately, uh, we brought the, uh, US Forest Service in with, to the Airport Committee, and, uh, we worked through the contract deals, and, uh, we were able to actually double our costs for the use of the airports.
Revenue.
Yeah, the revenue, the cost to them. Uh, and we got everything signed in, in agreement, and filed just weeks before they really needed to use it. So, we're very fortunate that we were able, one, get the contract signed so that they could use it, uh, and then, two, uh, decrease the cost of our revenue for the use.
Can I ask you a question, Bob? Since Cal Fire is also flying out of there, are they actually contributing for revenue to it, or...
It's all through the contract, yeah.
No, I mean, do we have a contract with Cal Fire also, or are we just sort of... We're doing a community service to the, uh, county by letting them do that?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure that Cal Fire is flying out there.
Oh, so, alright. Cause I thought you just said that Cal Fire was also flying helicopters out of there.
I, I got confused.
Okay, so it's just the, uh...
US Forest Service.
So, the one thing I'd like to add to that, just so everyone's aware, um, what we did is we brought in some people from the Forest Service. Luckily, that person was from Dunsborough, so was very willing to work with us and give us an understanding of how well it worked out. We had visitors taking back and forth with the members who had a lot of experience with this, and out of it, we came up with a contract that, number one, doubled the amount of revenue, uh, per operation compared to last year, and at the same time, set another set of dollars on top for closing the airport. So, the fact that the airport is closed right now means on top of everything else, we're getting more revenue. So, it's a little bit of good news, some unsaid, bad news, and stroke brings, but, uh, that's going on right now. Anything else on the airport? Okay, next, uh, Emergency Plan Task Force.
No, I haven't yet.
Okay.
Off to, uh, six o'clock sometime.
Okay.
Probably just a minute.
Veterans Memorial, we haven't been on that for a while. Mossbray Trail.
You don't need to report yet.
Yeah, they're neither here, so... Uh, broadband, um, we had, uh, information come in from our consultants, and right now, the cities are meeting and rolling over the data that we have and discussing possible plans going forward. Uh, we got a lot of great information, and, uh, with, uh, Bryce having gone on a trip to Kansas City to, uh, a conference that was paid for, um, by folks outside the city, uh, we got a lot of good information. So, we're just getting ready right now to sit down and, uh, take all the information in and see where we wanna go from there. That's all I have on that. Beautification Committee. So, we have the chairman is... Mari, do you wanna speak, and then I know we have a few members?
No, um...
Anne?
Anne's gonna give the question. Actually, I would speak for the committee.
Yeah.
If you've been downtown, you've noticed the fountain is going, and Bob will talk to you after. And, um, we've gotten a bench in front of, in front of City Hall, and we hope to get a, a planter with flowers next to the bench to really make it look nice. And there were actually people sitting on the bench the other day.
We did, and we had some installation.
And, uh, we're going to put a bench in front of Sam, and we're trying to arrange to put a bench in front of the library. The only problem is, is the sidewalk in front of the library slopes, so we'll have to have somebody that knows how to, how to, uh, build.
No problem.
You don't know how, or you don't know how...
We have lots more to learn.
Yeah, we can be careful.
We'll get somebody to lengthen the legs on one side because it's a sloping sidewalk, and so we're gonna get a, get a bench there. And Mari, um, has just on making us a tree city, and it's pretty complicated. It's not as easy as you're saying, gee, we got trees, we wanna be a tree city. You have to actually, um, need a lot of requirements, but she's gonna work on that, I think. And, um, we shouldn't have much trouble meeting those requirements. So, we're kinda coming along. Um, we wanted to ask if, if we come up with places we wanna put benches, if we can just kind of let you know where we wanna put the bench, rather than have to come and request permission and go through a meeting and all that. So, if we can arrange that, or have City Manager just hit us with permission or something. So, that's all we have. And Bob will talk to you after the town.
Mostly, I just need to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of the people of this town, the businesses of this town, uh, Mark, his crew in Public Works, um, the things I've got from individuals on the council. Um, it's such a delight to, as I walk around the corner from Chasta onto, uh, Pine Street, to hear and then see the fountain running, and so many people, the tourists come out of Cornerstone Cafe and get pictures taken with the fountain. Kids are throwing pennies into the fountain.
Oh, God, a revenue source.
Yes.
Look at this penny picture, yeah, love it, don't forget it.
And so, uh, uh, we still need to do a little work in patching the base, the basin, and then it'll be turned off, and then over the winter and into the spring, we'll figure out, um, how to judge if, uh, it's, uh, how strong the base is. And then also, we're looking for pictures of the fountain, uh, back when it had that middle bowl in there, and so we can see what we can do to recreate that. And, uh, but everybody that I've talked to is just thrilled that, that the fountain is running. It's, uh, the first project of our ten projects, and, uh, it's going very well and well received. And so, thank you, uh, to everyone who has taken part in that. Thank you.
My, my congratulations to you, sir. Enter the beautification committee, and I look forward to seeing all the other great work you do. It's a great sign of volunteerism, and thank you for pulling through on that. The post on the forum definitely let people know, even those not here, uh, something special going on, so thanks. Um, announcements and public comment. It's time for the public to have their...
Public...
Oh, Marijuana Task Force, well, thank you. Marijuana Task Force.
Are you ready for your presentation?
You wanna do it?
No, Mark, I think you'll probably be better. Cause all I'll do is get every candidate.
All I say, uh, the Marijuana Task Force, uh, met, uh, last Tuesday, and, uh...
Last Tuesday before that.
In the Tuesday before that, and we're looking to schedule a meeting. Julie, if you could, uh, make a note and send an email out to the Task Force, uh, for September twenty...
And more, and yet, obviously.
September nineteenth would be the next one.
Tuesday.
Is that, yeah, so for the next one. Um, and the, uh, at this point, the, uh, the Task Force is looking at, uh, bringing in ordinance from, uh, the city of Chastel Lake, and also the permit application process from Hollister. Uh, I saw that the permit application documents were sent in, uh, and we're waiting to get the, uh, the ordinance. It's on, uh, it's on the Chastel Lake's website, but we're looking at getting it and mailing it out as well. So, looking at using those to go through to help keep us, uh, focused as to going through a process.
Okay, it's time for public comments. Uh, each person is allowed up to three minutes for their comments, uh, should be for items that are not on the agenda, and, uh, so, a little wait. At this time, I open the podium for the comments, thanks.
As a member of the Financial Committee, um, I'm proud to say the work that was done by the staff was, uh, excellent, and, uh, it's incredible, required reading for everyone. Um, I hope council reads it several times. Was a little disappointing that we couldn't get full councils at the workshops. Um, definitely, you need to be grieved, uh, in what the city's looking at, uh, and where the city's sitting today. But as far as, as the work done by the city manager, the financial manager, it was the most transparent and honest budget I've seen, and I'm very appreciative of the work.
Peter R. Fifty-eight, fifty-nine, Sacramento Avenue in Dunsborough. Um, I'm disappointed that one of the things not on the agenda for tonight are any of the seven items that were raised by Barbara Cross, the Chairman of the Planning Commission, in a letter to all the members of the City Council and the City Manager. I thought the city was going to work effectively with the Planning Commission on any number of issues, from code enforcement on non-compliant buildings in the historic district, to the issue of sidewalks. That is, as entrepreneurs continue to invest in Dunsborough, the specific example is the Rowleys renovating the hotel where the Tiffy Fly Shop is, they're tearing up the sidewalk. Does the city and the Public Works Department want them to replace the sidewalk that's tearing up with concrete, or with papers? If they want papers, what kind of papers do they want? On the other side of the street is the Veterans Fountain with broken sandbags, uh, safety standard that's been there well over a year, a tree stump with weeds and suckers coming out of the tree stump. I really hope that the city, if it's not willing to put the individual items that Chairman Cross put in her letter to you as an attempt to communicate with you, if you don't put those on the agenda, have another joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council to deal with some of the issues that are sort of being shutted off on the beautification committee, with no real direction, with no money, with no plan. Um, when I get to speak to the budget and the City Manager's strong direction to all of you, that you need a vision and a plan, you really need a vision and a plan, including the downtown area and the infrastructure, so I would beg you to either schedule as agenda items what Barbara Cross raised as Chair of the Planning Commission, or sit the Planning Commission down with you again and talk about where we're going in the next twelve months. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Strum, sir. It's been a long time since you've been in this room, is it?
Welcome to your order.
I don't know where the city attorney sits, but I sat there for about fifteen years. Uh, I'm disappointed with the agenda also because we thought we had River Exchange, Great River Cleanup on the agenda, and I apparently didn't make it. That is coming up in, uh, nine days, and we have requested that the city be a sponsor, and I know we requested that late, so we may have missed the deadline, but we hope you will consider that. We've got some energetic young board members on River Change now, uh, got enough money to pay our bills. The Great River Cleanup is the biggest event of the year, and, uh, it's been going on for over twenty years. We've been around for twenty years. Cleanup started right after the spill, and a few of those before we got organized. This river is a big part of what brings people to Dunsborough, and the visitors like it, to see it clean, rather than full of garbage. So, we again request the city's assistance and sponsorship, and, uh, hope to see it out there on the sixteenth, take another crash on Long Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
I close the podium of the comment. Uh, next on the agenda, we have, uh, announcements from staff and council members. Uh, let's start off with, uh, Mark.
Yeah, just one thing that we're gonna bring up was, I just put in everyone's box the, uh, the notice, the Go to River Cleanup Day, uh, so, this, I just received that from, um, midterm, um, today, so I put a copy in all of your boxes, so...
Can I reiterate on just that one topic? The River Exchange? Okay, the River Exchange is Saturday, at twelve.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth at nine o'clock at the ballpark, um, uh, and, uh, then it's followed by a lunch from the Pizza Factory for all the volunteers. And, uh, this year, I'm understanding that, at, in the evening, there is a Cajun dinner and song at Pops Restaurant, starting at six o'clock, and I believe at five o'clock, and then I believe it was fifteen dollars per person. Thank you. And, uh, I encourage everybody, whether you, you go to the dinner or you go to the lunch, and get out there and, and help clean up the river. It's, we got, me and my crew got a hundred and eighty pounds last year. You know, I mean, that's pretty cool, but, you know, if you think about, that's a lot of trash. I went into Hobo Camp and I was, ooh, I was upset. So, uh, uh, I personally clean Hobo Camp, that's my stomping grounds. So, but I encourage everybody to come out and give us a hand, Saturday the sixteenth at nine o'clock.
Thank you. Any else on the rest of the year report?
Uh, no, it's it.
Okay. Ms. Shanta?
I would like to personally thank Bob. This is, Dunsborough used to be a volunteer town, and I'm so happy to see, you know, having volunteers to just do something without asking the city to participate, you know. The city, twelve years, I understand, it's been before, since that fountain has run. You know, after twelve years, yeah, a little bit of work had to be done, but I really want to personally commend you for taking the ball in this park, uh, you know. I went and saw it, you know, a few hours after it got turned out. It's nice, it was pleasing sounds, the flowers you planted look great. I know that, you know, we gave a commendation to Anne and, you know, Dylan and Brad Moresi, they're keeping that little corner by the bank clean. You know, Dylan, at his own cost, installed cigarette butt holders, and that's always clean. If we could just get a few more volunteers, I mean, the city is in dire straits financially, but the volunteers make a huge difference in how our city feels and looks. And it doesn't take that much effort to just do one small little part of, uh, our day. So, I wanna commend you personally.
Thank you too much.
I would like to warn the city, and, you know, some people may know it, I didn't know about the River Exchange River. How far do you go up on that river?
Moss Canyon.
Okay, well, we might have a huge amount of visitors on the sixteenth. Somebody is organizing a huge amount of people to go to Mossbray, and there might be over three hundred people. Where the hell? So, I just wanna warn you, that council scheduled on the sixteenth, it was all over Facebook. Uh, you know, I, you know, all of us at City Council got named personally, and I decided to not answer. The city has nothing to do with this. City can't prevent or, you know, notify Mark that maybe a good idea to let Sergeant Merrill know, but the city in itself can't do anything about with some, you know, outside group, but, boy, that's gonna be interesting, River Cleanup and all these people. Maybe you can get them to clean up the river.
Issue of bags, gloves.
Other, uh, other than that, I'm just, uh, you know, I was gratified to see the fountain going and, you know, the participation, um, a little worried about the, uh, and I wanted to, uh, also, you know, give a big kudos to all of our firefighting teams. You know, they got on that fire at Bradley Mountain, uh, immediately, you know, it, uh, you know, on the Facebook pages, and it was monitoring and, you know, trying to add commentary. City Manager also kept, you know, us abreast and put out notices on the, on the website, and, um, we calmed everybody that it wasn't going to, that we weren't going to be a fire. So, um, yeah, that was a little too close for comfort.
Mr. Christa?
Oh, I got lots. First, I wanna piggyback on what Miss Mari said, uh, I wanna commend all the firefighters. Uh, they did an outstanding job. It was close, it was too close for home. There was a lot of talk about, uh, transient starting a fire, somebody's arrested, none of that's true. They think it was transient starting a fire, nobody was arrested. I personally went in and thanked our firefighter chief, Amadea, and he was, you could see that man was beat, he was tired, he put his hours in on that. So, if you guys see our firefighters or, especially our fire chief, thank him, and, you know, commend him on what an outstanding job, hours and hours of it. That grade is eighty-five percent. Ninety percent is straight up and down. So, you wanna think about that, and I get laid cramps thinking about, like, even, uh, my, nah, no. So, a big shout out to firefighters. I talked about the River Cleanup on the sixteenth at nine o'clock at the Ball Field, followed by lunch from the Pizza, that, for all the volunteers, and then there's a great big ordeal, Cajun Dinner, Dinner Song at Pops, starting at five for fifteen dollars. On Saturday, September twenty-third, from nine to one, at the baseball field parking lot, is the annual Dunsborough Citywide Cleanup. It's for City of Dunsborough residents only. All's trash, leaves, et cetera must be in bags. We're taking mattresses, and we're taking tires if they're off the rims. We won't accept no hazardous materials, no chemicals, no paints, no loose leaves or trash will be accepted, and take note of the new location. It's at the Ball Park Parking Lot at the City Park from nine to one. Do not show up with your trash at City Hall.
Thank you for moving it down there.
Yeah, I...
Your name is Brian.
Yeah, thank you for moving it down there.
Takes away all the joy of the traffic jam downtown.
And the parade of trucks with their trash on it down, through downtown.
And can I add that, uh, this is for, uh, the citizens of, of Dunsborough who pay into their trash, who have mandatory trash, it's for, it's serviced as part of the bill. So, it's not up for outside the city of Dunsborough.
So, what do they do, bring their bill to prove?
Uh, proof of residency.
So, you wanna bring your trash bill and, uh, oh, okay, I see your ID with physical address, or your water bill. I didn't see that, probably see that. Okay, thank you for iterating that, it's important. Uh, again, this is time to clean up the town, you know, uh, complain to your neighbors, that's what it's about, each, it's the free day, get rid of your stuff. Uh, and also the fact that we ain't gonna be around next week, cause your City Council and a few staff members are going to the annual conference in Sacramento to study how to be better for you guys, so wish us well, and we'll see you on the twenty-first. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Well, before I cast a deck, um, would you let people know if you've got an extra job that you do when you went on the League of California Cities, and, uh, nobody really has heard about that? Would you explain, uh, the other position that you have?
I'm your District One Representative. I represent Siskiyou, Chasta, Modoc, and Lassen County. I'm on the Board of Directors for the League of California Cities, and I'm on the Policy Committee. So, before laws go into effect, we talk, go into effect, we talk about how they affect us, if they're good for us or not, and I'm kinda one of the loud ones to make sure that what the people down there want, and what we kinda want, we don't C I I, because they want what we got. So, uh, it's tough, but that's what I do.
Thank you, and I also say, just to piggyback on that, the way he got that position was a couple of folks from Sacramento, having met him in previous incarnations down there, actually drove to Dunsborough, asked him to put his name in to be on board, and, uh, so that's really an honor. It was the fact that people down in Sacramento represent the spirit that he has, the energy he puts in, and the fact that he's such a good ambassador for Dunsborough, they figure he could be a good ambassador for a few other cities around the area. Uh, from my standpoint, the only thing I have to, to point out is I'd like to, uh, piggyback on what's already been said. Um, this was the first time for me, I've only been here since two thousand eight, first time I, I lived out and saw a fire across the way, and it's a terrifying thing, and luckily for us, uh, the way it burned that night, it burned up fast, right up straight at eighty-five degree range, and, and so we were lucky, uh, different winds, different situations, could have been much different. Um, the way I was, uh, exposed to it, besides looking out my window right across and seeing it there, I went down and, and drove down to check with Chief Amadea and, uh, ask him what I needed to do, what we all needed to do, and he informed me that Julie had already woken up, City Manager Mark Brannigan, everyone was tuned in, Bryce Craig was lined up, Dave, Mari, everyone was lined up, so just to let you know, we were paying attention and trying to figure out what to do, and we were lucky, we didn't have to deal with much more than it was. Uh, so that's all that I have. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, I believe, right?
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, consent agenda is adopted. Uh, we have no public hearing, uh, no old business, and so we're moving straight to new business, uh, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget. Uh, before we do that, I'd like to read a statement that I received, and, and the City Manager received today, um, from Bryce Craig, our, our mayor. Uh, he was not able to be here, and, uh, because of the fact that it happened, um, later than when the agenda went out, our protocols and the laws say that he cannot Skype in right now, otherwise he wanted to and wouldn't. our protocols and the laws say that he cannot Skype in right now, otherwise he wanted to and would have been. So we checked, but he did want to make sure that when we got to the budget, he asked if we would read these two paragraphs, and so I will. "I regret not being able to participate in the meeting tonight. I was, however, present for all of the Finance Committee meetings and Council budget workshops. And while I'm not happy about the current financial situation of the city, I am happy with the process we undertook preparing the budget and the incredible work done by city staff. Specifically, our city manager and finance director should be applauded for their efforts. They are always forthcoming with information and they help guide the Finance Committee meetings and Council budget workshops in a way that was transparent and informative. For a number of reasons, the council is considering passage of a deficit budget. I'm confident all efforts were made to limit the deficit as much as possible. Many cuts and sacrifices were made. In my opinion, the proposed budget puts the city on the best possible footing while maintaining critical services. As we look to the future, I hope we'll be able to get our priorities outlined in time for a thorough budgeting process next time around." Signing Bryce Craig, Mayor. With that in mind, I'll pass it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton and Council members. This draft budget. Check, check, there it is. This draft budget is located on the city's website. And once the budget's approved, whether it's this version or if we have any updates that need to be done after this meeting, we will post the adopted budget on our website as well. So it's there for all who would like to go through the budget. And to follow with what was in the words from the mayor, this budget is a deficit budget, the general fund, and we also have some issues with our enterprises. We did have a number of public meetings. The Finance Committee met, which was open to the public, and we had a couple workshops open to the public as well. So a lot of the details were presented at those meetings. So I won't get into great details unless requested by the council. So feel free to, I'm going to really just kind of executive summarize the funds and unless there's questions, then we'll go into whatever detail that you would like to. And of course, if there's any change that are being proposed, then that would have to go to a vote as well. So I'd like to just get started in, starting with the general fund, which is the first one within the budget.
I could start just to say that, as has been said, we've all been through this and we've already asked our questions. So really, you know, if you present it to the public and let them know, we'll follow up with that.
Okay, for the general fund, the first page shows the revenue sources that are coming into the general fund. And if we look at what the revenue is coming in, we have 1.37, 1,373,499 dollars that's coming into the general fund. That we believe will be coming in. And again, the budget is a educated guess. As to what we expect to receive and what we expect to spend, so that we have a direction and are responsible with the resources. So that's our best educated guess there. The first department within the general fund is the City Council. And the City Council has actually reduced the spending from what it was in prior years. And went from 23,000 down to 19,000. City manager, my budget has gone down as well from last year's. And not to say that it's because I'm spending less, a large portion of that had to do with interim city managers and things like that. So it's stable because you've got a full-time city manager. City clerk, that budget has gone up in the duties of the city clerk. The actual cost within the general fund hasn't gone up, it's just a shifting of where the city clerk's duties are actually falling. We've shifted some of the utility billing stuff over into the finance, meaning that there's other duties that are possibly city clerk types things, which are general fund activities. So it's not that the costs have gone up, it's more that the type of work that they're doing are less enterprise benefits and more general fund purposes. So you'll see costs going up in other areas. Let's see, city attorney, or city attorney costs have gone up. It's, trying to look at what the, the actual cost, it's less than the actual cost, but because of the lawsuits that we have, we've programmed more money in there to make sure that we have the legal representation to, to defend the city clerk lawsuits. Planning, our planning costs have gone up as well. Some of those are the reportements. Again, the city clerk, some of the duties are going to be more outside of the enterprise and more in general fund. So there is some cost that has to do with the safety element within the general plan that's programmed here. Other than that, it's all basic, basic costs. And I'd like for the council to know and the public to be witness to is these, the general fund's budget has zero capital expenses in here. We've cut everything out of the general fund that is possible and we're still in a deficit. So there's just really nowhere to cut at this time, definitely. So when we're talking about these costs, these are just bare bones, we're keeping the lights on with these costs.
Mr. Manager, a question for you. Could you take this opportunity right now to explain something that I don't think really has ever been given much explanation? And that is the large hit we have from SCORE, the amount, the number of years. Just so people are aware of why we're going through this problem right now.
Yeah, that's one of the, one of the concerns we have is the rising escalating cost of liability in all areas. And SCORE is our, we're self-insured and they're a representative that we're part of other local cities and special districts that bond together to try to buy down the rate of the cost of insurance. But we are self-insured. And as such, whenever there were claims, there's, our insurers' costs go up because we have to pay those claims and the cost of processing those claims. And just the cost of doing insurance, just if we all have car insurance, health insurance, all these things are going up. Just like at home, they're going up for the city as well. And some of these costs are going up 20, I think 24% in some areas, some are only about 7%. But all across the board, our costs and liability is getting more and more expensive.
And then we got hit with $250,000, is that right?
Well, we have the assessment.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure everyone understood.
Yeah, the part of the SCORE, which is broken down in different departments, but there is a big chunk that's out of the general fund as well. And it's assessment because of prior claims that exceeded the expected claims that the city should have had. And because we exceeded those claims and they're paid out, our costs, they charged us for those claims and we're having to pay them back over a certain period of time. So we have one more year after this year that to pay on that to get up to where we're paid off. But it makes it very difficult to balance the budget with those types of costs coming in.
So to clarify then, we're into year four right now with a five-year payback. Overall, it was around 250, and we're finishing up now year four. And after next year, we'll be clear of that. And just so people realize, this was largely dealing with sewer backups. So that's the type of insurance that we're paying on right now. And we're also living the ways of making sure this doesn't happen again. But I just wanted to have people understand why it's so tight right now with the budget. This is one of the reasons, is because we're taking around how much, 80,000, Pam?
72,000.
72,000 dollars this year is going to pay for those backups. So that's the real reason that we're facing a problem right now. It's not an overall sense of our liquidity.
I'd like to add to that.
Yes.
You make it sound like we're never going to be in that situation again. We're going to keep getting assessments and going with SCORE. There's no way to tell, you know, what we're going to be hit. So I don't want the public to, you know, you know, have this, you know, rosy picture that in two years, we're not going to have more SCORE assessments. You need a much better explanation of that. Pam has got a really great explanation on how that works. I don't really want to tie up all this time, but it isn't going to stop. Until we fix our infrastructure, you know, we are going to have liability claims on our sewer. Most of the hits have been with sewer-related costs. And it's not going to stop. I don't want to paint a totally rosy picture, it's finicky, finicky.
Thank you.
And next year, that cost goes up to 85,000 dollars. So it's going to be, it's the last payment, but it's going to be from higher level.
Yeah.
It's going to be a challenge, next year's budget will be a challenge.
So continue, sir.
Okay. Okay, finance administration, the costs there have gone up, but there are some pre-made cuts within the department, but there's been some increases that had to do with the employees. So a lot of these costs are down to the bare bones and it's really just moving employees as to where they're being apportioned. Okay, and the building inspection that has gone down, where it was last year budget 22,000, we're at just under 20,000 this year.
Could you elaborate on the status of building inspection and code inspection right now? What you told us in terms of how we're going to manage and how we're going to deal with it?
Well, as far as building inspection, we have a contract employee that is paid out of this fund. He's a building inspector throughout parts of the county. But as far as code enforcement, one of the things we're looking at establishing is to do the policy and procedure on how to deal with code enforcement issues. We do, we have been dealing with weekly, a number of calls that we get every week regarding to neighbors and trash and public nuisance types calls. But we do get a series of larger types of code enforcement issues that we've received. Primarily, there's a couple hotspots that we get continuous calls on. We have made some progress on some of those issues, but they are just slow in the type of enforcement that we have. One of the other things we're looking at to help expedite code enforcement issues is we look at going to administrative citation type of enforcement that helps streamline what can be done to get compliance. For right now, the due process is very lengthy process that's spelled out typically. It's increasing punishment type of activities with a call, a letter, and then, you know, threats of, you know, us cleaning it up and court dates and all that stuff. Where civil liability type of things would be more set in place as to if this happens, we move with this very streamlined type of process. Received a type of, that type of ordinance from our attorney, John Kettin. So it's something we'll look at, possibly bring to the council at a later date, if it's deemed as a priority through the commission.
Is that actually related with weed ordinance?
No, no, this would be strictly to do, to deal with code enforcement, yeah.
I'm sure.
Law enforcement and Sergeant Merrill sent me an email this morning saying that he woke up with a sick this morning. So he apologizes for not being here. And he did receive the request for speeding tickets, so he had to report, so he'll bring that when it comes to the next meeting. But law enforcement, this is the contract with the Sheriff's Department, which we are now in year two of a three-year contract and our code enforcement officer as well. And that cost, pretty stable, it's gone up a little bit primarily due to the labor apportionments and the cost increase in cost of labor. Okay, and fire, we've got, the cost has actually gone down from prior year budgets. Where it was 214,000, we were down to 185,000. And this is where streets and roads, again, there is a lot of requests for capital replacement in this fund or department, but there is nothing in here, so the equipment is getting old. And the budgeted amount in this department has dropped from 178,000 down to 158,000. Buildings and grounds, again, the budgeted amount for this department has gone down from 93,000 down to 88,000. No capital. This is, we're now to Department 605, Community Promotion. This is where we have the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Council. The Chamber of Commerce last year was budgeted at 10,000, this year is budgeted at 11,000 dollars. And new to the budget this year is the Economic Development Council at 5,000 dollars. And for transaction abuse tax, we created a new department, 4125, to look at what we expect to receive in the new sales tax, half-cent sales tax revenue. And we've put in there special projects. We have children's park at 9,000 dollars, that's the rent that we paid for the children's park out here. Senior nutrition, we have a 2,000 dollars, which we pulled from the budget we last year. Sidewalk improvement projects, this has been a goal of the City Council. And this year, we're looking at 21,200 dollars. And we're also hoping to get money from the LTC for sidewalk repairs as well. So we're hoping to really get a good chunk of change this year and get a lot done.
I mean, that's twice as much as last year?
Uh, it's, we didn't have, we didn't have anything in last year.
But it didn't pass, I guess, or it was a thousand dollars or so. I don't know if it's got the truth, so we're coughing it up.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be huge. Let's see, library, we have 14,000, last year was 12,500. And parks and rec, we have 12,500, which is what they received last year as well. And we have the railroad depot. They're in need of a new roof, but we're looking at just patching it. We had an estimate of 600 dollars to patch it. We're hoping that we can still get that price to patch the roof before the rainy season. And we have the, the Big Fish, is at 3,500 dollars. But that's actually the money that was already approved before this budget got adopted in that, from the council to stock the river right now. So I think we have one more stocking that's going to be done at the end of this month. And I believe there may be some advertising this year for that 3,500 dollars. So most of that's already been appropriated and spent. And Citizen of the Year, we have 200 dollars in there as well. So with the revenues that we anticipate and the expenses, the general fund is currently at a deficit of 27,458. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next fund. Okay, the next fund is the Tallinn Dolly Fund. This is a, we're fortunate in that this is one of the funds that actually is doing well because we receive money from an almanac. So this fund here is actually in a surplus where the fund is going to receive more money than we're anticipating spending this year. So we're looking at a surplus of 8,298 dollars at the end of the year for this fund. Sewer Fund, which is Fund 20. Here, there's, in this, in this budget here, we're showing two different funds for revenues that are coming in. One is the sewer charges, which we're anticipating 548,000. And then there's a sewer improvement revenue of 185,000 dollars. There's other monies that come in as well. One is we're looking at grant funds and there's hookup charges, but those are the two monies that come in from your utility bills. So we're looking, we're anticipating 1,745,565, but 1 million of that is grant funds. Not from sewer. but one million of that is grant funds, not from sewer bills. And then we have, again, we've, we're not funding any capital in this fund and we've kept everything as bare bones as we could just to keep the lights on and provide the service. And we're anticipating costs of one million eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Again, a million of that is for grants, for what, towards grant projects. So the fund is operating, the two funds together are operating in deficits, sixty-nine thousand forty-eight dollars. Okay, revenues. This, this fund here, there was a, the city council did a rate reduction to this fund because of an excessive reserve. And so the revenue that's anticipated to come into this fund is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We do have a citywide cleanup in here, anticipated cost of ten thousand dollars. And this fund is, the cost for the fund is three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. So this fund is operating at a hundred-and-six thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollar deficit for the year.
Before we go on to that, can we, if anyone understands that deficit is something that we did on purpose so that we could lower the reserves and that what we'll be looking at next is with the negotiation. Can you explain the negotiation of the contract and how we'll do it to eighteen after that?
Well, the, we currently have a contract that the council was offering a one-year extension on the contract. But we are looking at developing more comprehensive contract, bringing up to more of the liability and language of today. And with that, we're looking at doing a rate study as well to figure out what we can do to stabilize the fund so it's no longer deficit spending in the future so that it can stabilize and to be able to stabilize itself for typically five years if we're looking at doing after two-eighteen process. But yeah, it will, if we're looking at a hundred-and-six thousand dollar deficit just for this one year, it's definitely spending down the reserves as anticipated. So we'll need to address that in the near future. Okay, water. Now, the water fund anticipating revenues of one point, one million seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand three hundred and one dollars. Again, one million dollars of that is anticipated through grant. Very, very fortunate in the grants. Expenses are one million three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. We're looking at a surplus of three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand seven-seven dollars.
Could you give a fifty-thousand, well, fifty-thousand-foot overview of where we are in terms of the five-year plan we have talked about? Because I'm hearing questions of people saying, where's the money going that I've collected? And you put the word surplus in there. I just want to make sure everyone understands we're building this up so we can do the repairs. Is that right?
Yeah, the, the money will go into the reserves, which will be used to start working towards funding the capital. As I mentioned, all these other funds, we are not spending anything on capital. But as we know, we've got a number of water leaks that we've been battling over the years, or over the last couple of months. And we're concerned about liability of sewer. So in the water, this is, we have a water master plan. This money will go towards getting the infrastructure, as Madi mentioned. We've got to make sure we take care of our infrastructure. So we're not spending money on paying off claims and paying the insurance companies. Where this is, the people that pay the water and sewer bills are investors, they're stakeholders. So this money really goes towards ensuring that their, the values in the community are where they need to be and they're not going to have these when it's going out. So this type of money will be used to replace water needs, do more efficient types of services, support equipment, chemicals, and keep pace with inflation. As we all know, costs of just having a TV service at your home, with your power. We have multiple layers of costs that go into these departments, chemicals, regulatory costs, our power. You can look at the budget here, it's all broken down line by line, what these costs are. And you can look to see what's happening year after year, they go up.
Thank you.
Okay, airport. Fund Forty. In this one here, we have anticipated revenues of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand one hundred and forty-one. And we do have two grants in this as well. We have a two-hundred-and-eleven thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollar grant for the airport layout plan and eighty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollar grant for the pavement management plan. Ten percent match coming from the city. And we have expenditure, anticipated expenditure of three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars, which is a deficit budget of twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Now that the airport's closed, unfortunate circumstances, but this will improve the budget for this fund when the money is received. So this deficit will not be as bad this year.
Insurance went up five hundred bucks.
For the property or for the airport?
Yeah. It's twelve, that's seventeen.
Oh, yeah. The, the property, our property insurance went up thirty-four percent. So that's spread across all the funds.
Oh, jeez. Yeah, okay.
Okay, you're welcome. And we have the local transportation. Most of the funds after this are external funds that come in, the LTC and then gas taxes. And there are monies that come in that we guess, make our best guess as to what we think is going to be coming in for these outside agencies. And we try to spend those monies as fast as we get them. And we spread those out throughout the city to reduce the impact of the general fund. So that's the meat and potatoes of the budget. If there's any questions?
For example? Open the podium to public comments.
Don't, don't go.
Please. I have a fifty-five twelve done grabbing. We need to be careful. This SCOR insurance thing, it's not, if we didn't have it, it wouldn't resolve the issues that we have as a budget. I think the city manager's narrative is fairly clear and the citizens need to know the financing of the city of Dunsmere need to be addressed. Historically, we're down at least three positions. We may or may not be hiring to fill the one that was in the narrative. These positions need to be filled. We are having a few key people in retirement age that's coming up really fast. And we don't really have capital improvement funds to handle things like vehicles and equipment. And that's a serious issue for the citizens of Dunsmere in the next few years. So the, the staff needs equipment in order to do their jobs and do it well. And we'll be replacing everything from street sweepers to pickup trucks. The city's going to need to generate funds and it's, it's going to have to face the issues. Mr. Art keeps bringing up sidewalks and planning commission keeps bringing up code enforcement. Those are things that cost money. And this council, for very good reason, hasn't spent the money or assigned those tasks to city managers because they're very expensive. And if we are going to go that way, we're going to have to generate new revenues in the city. So at some point, a crisis will reach a conclusion and we'll decide that we either have to raise taxes or find some new revenue sources or we're not going to offer the services of being able to go in and eradicate abatements and things like that. It's a balance. And my council has to be really aware financially of where we sit because we can make a lot of promises, but we can't keep doing it right now.
On behalf of the library, we're very, very grateful for the support of the tax money. We're not able to apply for a municipal grant. I've just kept this point for the last six years because they changed their policy. And if you've received a grant for three consecutive years, you have to take a timeout, which will be us next year. So very timely and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Peter Art, fifty-eight, fifty-nine Sacramento Avenue. It's sort of the out-of-body experience with Rick Chan here with Mario Rabinov here because we sat in your chairs ten years ago. And of course, we're thrown out of office by the citizens of Dunsmere for dealing with the water and sewer issues. So you finally have a professional city manager. And what I want to draw your attention to is the message that the city manager put in writing to the five of you. It is evident that the city of Dunsmere needs to develop a clear mission and vision statement and establish goals for limited resources to be allocated towards. Not perfectly grammatical, but the point is what everybody is going to say, this is a terrible budget for the citizens of Dunsmere. And you guys own it. Until you start with a vision and a plan, which you refuse to do, does the airport have a business plan yet? We made the decision because the city was hemorrhaging cash to no longer allow the red ink to bleed from the airport. Here again, it's contributing to the deficit we all have to live with. Have you thought through, do you have a plan? For the sidewalks, council member Shanta coachingly points out that until you fix the sewer pipes, until you fix the sidewalks, you'll continue to face extraordinary liability because your infrastructure's shot. You'll get more claims from more people that are hurt, have their houses ruined, et cetera, and so on. And SCOR is going to say, because you refuse to have a plan, because you refuse to deal with your liability issues, the other cities aren't going to pay. The people of Dunsmere are going to pay. So you punish us because you refuse to look forward and deal with the kickback and down-the-street issues. So I would hope on your next agenda, you actually list them to the city manager and start some process to develop a clear mission and vision statement and establish goals for limited resources to be allocated toward. Otherwise, you make decisions on an ad hoc basis and it really is fine for the next two weeks, fine for the next two months. But in terms of representing people on fixed incomes, we knew we would get citizen involvement once we decided to take on the water and sewer issue. Boy, did we get citizen involvement. You have your committee meetings for water, for sewer, for the budget. I've come to some of them. If you get three or four people, that's a big turnout. When we decided to raise the water and sewer rates to deal with the crumbling seventy and ninety-year-old pipes, we had a lynch mob into the hundreds of it at the community center. We've done our part as citizens. We didn't get paid anything. I feel underappreciated, although I knew we did exactly the right thing. But you guys need to step up. After all of the missteps you made around hiring a professional manager, you have one. If you're not going to use him, if you're not going to get the value out of him, you're letting us all down. You have a water enterprise fund to manage. I know a lot of limited income people who are opening their water bills and feigning them. We had a citizens' committee led by Rick Chan and we kept faith with the people. I said over and over, why doesn't the city have a lifeline rate plan for people on fixed income so they don't have to bear the burden of being able to flush their toilets and water their small gardens? And none of you were interested. It was the day's rate study and that's the way it goes. And caring about low-income people and big families in the city wasn't important. You need to change your ways. You need to start being forward-looking instead of just playing out fires. And you've got a perfect stage to do so if you do it. If you don't, we're going to be here twelve months from now. You're going to be borrowing from the water fund. You're going to be borrowing from the sewer fund. The public works department is going to be understaffed. The sidewalks are going to look the same. So I think the citizens of Dunsmere, those of us that see a future for the community, want you to step up. Want you to have a clear mission and a vision statement that we all get to be a part of and start moving in forward. The notion that volunteers can do everything is really a people trick. We're not your public works department, even though we do our best to help out. I'm not at all happy that the proposition P funds, which I voted for to support the library, to support the rec district, yes, I want the sidewalks fixed. You're putting twenty thousand dollars of those revenues toward sidewalks. If the citizens knew that, most of the ones that aren't here tonight, I don't think they'd be happy about it. But they're not engaged in the process because why? There's no vision and there's no plan. So I hope, starting with the next meeting, you listen to the wise counsel of your city manager and start the process. I think the vision process you did at the beginning of this year, again, was a noble fight. Sidewalks were a priority in September. Sidewalks are just the same. The citizens get the problems going, but the city can't fix the sidewalks.
Thank you. Other comments? Close podium, public comments. Chris Shantuck.
And we'd like to, the public know that this was the first time that I've participated in the process with the city of Dunsmere. And it was grueling, but I want to commend both our chief financial officer and our city manager that they made it painless. I have gone through the budget at least five times, line by line. I probably am at my max. They did. Am I happy with it? No, I'm not happy with the state that Dunsmere is in. But it's going to take a lot more than, you know, standing up at the podium and saying, oh, we don't have a vision. It's not the fact that we don't have a vision, it's the fact that we don't have enough revenues and the expenses keep going up. Yes, we are going to, you know, we've had some challenges before when we haven't had stability in the, in our city administrator. We have that stability now. We are going to, you know, have a limited process that starts earlier. It has been promised, you know, by our two chief, you know, financial officers. I enjoyed working and continue to enjoy working with both Art and Hannah. I think that we're going to try to fine-tune, you know, some of the transparency in the budget. I'm not happy with some items, but I'm happy and it's the best that can be done overall. We have all agonized over this. And I'm a big money penny pincher from way back. And when Bob said, oh, people are throwing pennies into the fountain, we have revenue source because we have to find revenue sources. And unfortunately, Peter, we are going to have to depend on volunteers to do stuff. Yes, the volunteers of Dunsmere, not the public works, but we are strapped for how to pay. but we are strapped for how to pay for a lot of things. And if the volunteers can come up with creative means, yeah, making the city looking better, why would we turn them down? I thank you, Mark, and I thank you, Cam, for budgets we can come up with. I think we have a lot of challenges, but it's something that I feel like I can pass.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Sir. I wish it was different, but you know, that's the end of it, it is. You can't squeeze blood on the turban. Like I say, I wish it was different. There's... I'm with Mario. I commend you guys, you guys hours and hours. And Mario too, you know? Good job, you guys. I'm good.
I'd like to commend our two members on it as well. Mario Rashanta and Bryce Craig. It was felt comfortable having them go through it with the two of you and from there work its way out. And as everyone says, it's not nice having a deficit, but the deficit is really, that number being there is really a matter of transparency. We can expect that things can go up and we can hope on that. And we're saying this is our best guess and that's where we're at. Couple of quick things. Lifeline rate. This has been trying to be explained several different times and I'll try it again. It's against the law for the state or for the government, for us, to charge somebody else one rate and with that have it built in that somebody else is going to be charged less. Everyone is supposed to be charged the same amount for the service provided. Now, that doesn't mean that a lifeline can't happen. What it means is somebody has to step forward outside of the government. Something the city council can't do outside of the government and say, we're going to start a nonprofit and we're going to take donations and those donations will go towards a lifeline. That's the way the system works. So it's not that the city doesn't want it to. We had it in there and we were told by our lawyer that it's impossible to do that. We would be breaking the law. So if anyone really feels strongly about that, Mr. Art, you can start a lifeline program.
You're totally wrong, sir, it's a matter of law.
I've been told by our lawyer, that's what I'm going by. That's the reason we did it the way we did. The other thing about the overall rates and everything being paid, we went through the same process. In fact, we went through two of it. We went through a year of putting together water rates. And the water rates were meant to make up for all the other years when things didn't happen. And we set out to do it over a five-year period of time. And just like it was done with the budget and with Rashanta and Mr. Craig, Mr. Craig and I spent a year working with committee, putting all the information together. We went through a Prop 218 meeting at the community center. And during that meeting, it lasted about two and a half hours. But we went through it and in the end, everyone, I think, pretty much understood what the numbers were. And we were not doing anything without being able to point where the numbers went from point to point to point. We went through the Prop 218 process with 40 negative votes out of approximately 800 that would have been needed to overturn it or even to kind of put a dent in it. And then on top of that, we had to go through a measure process where the three major areas, sewer, I'm sorry, water, trash, and get the other thing. We had to withstand that and we missed that with 66% of the vote. So yeah, I understand things are rough, but I really don't think that this council has any reason to feel bad about the fact that we undertook the process. We did the work. We put in the hours. We went before the people. It was all in public. We gave many, many different presentations. And so that's where we are with that. Lastly, as far as overall vision, right now, the best way I could put it is our city manager is like a racehorse. There's only so much you can put on. And I, as a person who's spent, you know, three decades or so in management and dealing with the challenge of not having enough resources, when I understand, when you understand what one person has to go through with all the different things on, we basically look and say, what can you handle now? And we have in plan, the whole idea of going through the process that he's wanted to go through from the very beginning. But he couldn't go through that the way he wanted to because he came in in the middle. He was already behind. He has started from the beginning and none of us are fighting the idea of having a visioning statement. We're waiting for Mr. Branning to say, I'm ready for the next lap. And that's basically what it is. So I have the utmost respect for him and for Pam and everything we put into this. I don't have any apologies for the budget. I feel bad for the budget. I feel bad we don't have more revenue. As far as planning, you can tell from, Mr. Branning will tell you that every time we talk, one way or another, it's about how do we bring in new housing so we can move more people in? How can we fill the schools? And we're going down to Sacramento and my number one goal is to find some leads for people that can come in and turn the house of glass into a beautiful project, something for the airport. So it's not like we're not working off the vision. It's that we haven't had the opportunity with everything going on to be able to do it together as a council. So with that in mind, any other comments from the two members? Play a motion.
I have to read it.
I don't have it, so I'll make the motion.
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
The right words, we're here again.
It's in here somewhere.
The motion is...
Yeah, this is throwing me off now. We have forced the staff to do all the printing that was, oh, there. Oh, you didn't.
Some of us didn't do that.
I make a motion to accept the budget as stated in the narrative that our city manager has written on it. And accept the budget for the year 2017.
I'll make the motion.
I'm going to work for you, the city board.
She's got to work it out.
She'll work it out.
She's got to adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt the budget.
I make a motion to adopt the budget as stated in the narrative that is written by our city manager for the year 2017.
Eighteen.
The city, you got eighteen, the city's seventeen, right?
Seventeen, eighteen.
Seventeen.
I said it, that motion.
All the favor, oh, no, yes, the vote. The train, please, yes.
Councilor Rivas.
Yes.
And the term continues.
Yes. Thank you.
I just want to thank the council for approving the budget. And I'd also like to say that while it's tough, we're going to get through it.
Show your ass three minutes.
The best way to get through these difficult times is first to identify it, which is what we're doing. And the council has shown large support in needing to create these vision visions and goals. So once, now that the budget's adopted, that's really, the next step will be to set workshops to start bringing the public in and identifying what we want this city of Dunsmere to look like in the future.
Well, what were the, you had generally the issues that you had in mind and you've been doing various things. Could you just run through that so people understand what your vision is of the process we'll be doing for the next year?
Well, the, look at probably around mid-October to get started in scheduling the workshops. We'll focus on the mission first. What is basically the core purpose for this government? And then we'll look at needing to develop a vision. What do we want this community to be? Not just, you know, what does the community want this community to look like? And then with that, we'll start to establish goals. The goals have already been, there's already been some goals established, which is wonderful. But going forward, we're going to look at what are the goals needed to achieve the vision that this community has for this community? And with those, really identifying the resources to achieve those goals. So that's probably one of the more critical aspects of this process. And probably the most painful is we don't have much resources, but we need to focus where the resources we have, where they do go. And that is going to mean there's going to be things that we're not going to be able to fund because we're going to focus those resources to things we want to get funded. So that's what's going to be difficult is there's going to be some, once we get through all the creativeness, then we have to get down to the taxing of how we're actually going to achieve those goals. Because a goal isn't any good unless you've got the resources to back it up, whether it's human resources or financial resources. So that's where the next year's budget process will be after the holidays. Typically around February, we'll start talking to the departments, asking them for what their needs are. We'll also have the application process for the passant sales tax in December. So we're going to have these things in February. We'll start working internally on those things. And then we'll start coming to the council March, April timeframe to start talking about, probably April, talk about draft budgets. But we'll have the finance committee in before we start talking about it as well.
Thank you. Next general item, we have... You have sure? Sure, we'll take the five-minute recess back to five. Ready to sit. What do you got on the next item? Next item is the sewer fund transfer, especially to my ear.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. Here, the staff is asking the council to authorize a one-time transfer of $100,000 to the Sewer Improvement Fund, which is Fund 21, to the Sewer O and M Fund, which is Fund 20, so that Enterprise can be closed out officially year 16 and 17, which was passed this year. So the fund is currently operating at deficit. There are two funds within the sewer fund. One is, as you can see on the bill, where one is for operation and maintenance basically. The other one is for Improvement Fund. But the last time there has been a rate increase in the sewer enterprise was in 2011, almost six years ago, around six years ago. And consequently, the stagnation has not kept up with the increased regulatory and inflationary needs of the sewer operation and maintenance. And as a result, it doesn't have enough money to keep the lifeline. So what I believe is the easiest way to resolve the issue is to do a, is to transfer from the same enterprise the Sewer Improvement Fund into the Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund since it's within the same enterprise. So that's what I'm looking to do so that we can, once we get, we've gone out to bid for auditing services, once we have an auditor, deploy the books, we need to be able to say how we're going to balance the enterprise. And this is what I believe is the simplest way to do that.
Have you pulled us up early at having to do another rate study for the sewer also?
Yeah, as part of the, when we just looked at the budget, there is money in there for sewer funds. And as part of the grant funds, we're having a sewer rate study. So we're fortunate that those studies, which are expensive, is going to be paid for through the grant. So it will look at what the capital, what the operation maintenance costs are, what the debt service is for the enterprise, and also what the capital needs are for the enterprise. And we'll look to structure options that the council can consider in getting the funding doors in the light.
Any other questions? Hold the, hold the comments.
All right. 14512 Dunsmere Avenue. Councilman, for your consideration, it's sad, Mr. Art walked out of here. Despite many issues with him, he's still a credible knowledgeable person. If we ever do get the chance, maybe we ought to pull him aside and say, what do you, past Public Utility Commission guy, know about creating this kind of building fund? There are several things we could do. One of the things about water alone was the fact that we can establish a one-time fund for people that have water breaks. So I was having a can, my love, and I said a couple of weeks ago, it looks pretty bad. We're going to have to raise sewer rate. Of course, she threw a fit. And then I was talking to her last night after some effort at the marijuana committee meeting. I said, you know, what's more important? The sewer rate or the marijuana committee you're working on? And she said, well, easily the sewer rate. So the city of Dunsmere, going on to another tangent here. The city of Dunsmere has had some real issues between staff who work for the corporation of the city of Dunsmere, the company, and the citizens and councilmen. And the real issue is when a topic comes up, like Bryce said, on beautification committee, why don't we have a fund that people can dominate? And then immediately the thing comes up and it comes up from many different sources. But what guarantee we have, the city council won't spend that money on something that wasn't originally planned for. It always bothers me. Some say it's electrification, some say it's out and out what staff does. They don't lay out to council that there are several options with funds. Funds are not real money. It's the way the city accounts for the citizens' money at the end of the year, on June 30. So one of the real truths about any general law city is any money you don't spend in a budget that you've set aside to spend becomes fair game in the next year's budget. And one of the things with funds is city council can spend any funds, anything they want, if they do a resolution to do it. That being said, we'll get to the topic here. Yes, me and Art, our council, found out that the city's water and sewer was in real misrepair. Unlike you guys, we had to pass three hikes on the water. We had to pass three hikes, according to PACE, on the sewer. That being said, only two were done on sewer. That's significantly different. That's like turning everybody's bill to triple overnight. And that's what we had to do. We created a task force. This task force, you're Chan, this is Powers, you're not here. So other people were on it. And we went through the same process that you talked about going through, council. On it was Mr. Fisher, who was a many-year councilman for the city of Dunsmere. I actually found out he was much more articulate than I thought he was in reading some of the stuff that I've gone over. And that task force came back with some suggestions. Council appointed me and the city manager to sit down and look at 10 suggestions they came up with and negotiate with them. We agreed with eight of the 10. This task force actually did some critical and important work for the city of Dunsmere. And what it set aside, and it's because of people like Mr. Fisher that knew the game and knew stuff. And also because we had the health department coming up here saying, you guys need to have a capital improvement program. Like your city manager tells you, you need to be setting aside capitals for things. You need to have that in the water. You need to have that in the sewer. You have issues with I and I. Terrible issues with I and I. That's on you. You need to be able to pay for it. And they said, you need to set aside funds and a capital improvement to be able to pay for these things, as was pointed out tonight. I and I is a huge issue when it comes to insurance. If you want to consider the grease clogs, the other things that happen to our sewer and the backups that happen in the building. There's a place in North Dunsmere, an area, that's had two buildings that we've paid for because of backups inside those buildings. It's expensive. Cornerstone had a backup inside of it. And we all know Mr. Art's had a backup inside of it.
Mark, Mark, just one last question.
Councilman, I'm getting right to it as fast as I can. Councilman is a little bit different. We're talking specifically about a topic.
Okay.
Okay? So it's obvious you're not listening.
No, I'm listening.
So it's fine.
I'm listening.
Okay? So what Mr. Fisher, Mr. Chan set aside was a plan. My council agreed to it by ordinance and passed it. You guys have it in front of you tonight to remove it. But in that plan was to create an improvement plan for the water, which has been critical for you guys in being able to deal with water issues, things like rate studies and projects, as well as for the sewer. as well as for the sewer. So the last thing that, the INI, the pipes that go to the sewer plant, the last thing that cost us is also one of the things that's really hit in O and M. And that is, in a rainy season, all the water leaks into our sewer pipes, ends up at the sewer plant, and we get both fines, and we run the sewer plant heavily and have to go to the river heavily during those times because we have so many INI problems. So now to bring the three points together, it's simply this. Council agreed to it. Those improvement funds were set up for a reason, a very specific reason that's gotten the city in a position where it's able to do things. You have options tonight. One option is, you can just allocate the money into fund. I keep hearing over and over again, it doesn't matter, it's really the same fund. No, it doesn't matter. The fund was created because the citizens of Dunsmere, through a task force and through a council, agreed, this is what we would do to position ourselves, because we were told by professionals, this is what you want to do. The other option is, we can borrow the money. You can reform the task force. You reform the task force, they can go through the facts, they feel that we can merge the two, that's fine. But we all know, we're facing the task of raising funds for that sewer enterprise. Now, where this all really becomes important is, over the years, whether it's my council, Mr. Fisher's council, and it's evidence, and Mr. Fisher's work, there is very little trust of staff when it comes to these funds. And he specifically said that those funds would not be attached for any other purposes than the improvements. It's a 218 process. It was part of the process that those funds would be established, these projects would be done, and this was the commitment, the faith with council, that these things would be done. And one of the most important things they agreed to was also transparency. There's supposed to be a report every year, what projects got done and how the money's spent. Some of that hasn't been done by previous councils. But now, this council's embarking on taking money for the improvement fund that shouldn't be taken, that's set aside money, and not dealing with the real issues, which is, it needs to get together with the people and face the sewer, O and M, so it's funded properly. That being said, there's a real serious issue with trust over these issues. You can grin about it and think that you're different, but it's going to be serious. And the final bit of this is, the average income in this town is about 23 grand. When you're doing sewer increases, you're talking about people like me, Mr. Heisler, and yourself, and Mari, people on fixed income. Staff makes a reasonable income. Yes, there is no doubt, we need to charge more money for our sewer enterprise to make it financially solvent. But the truth of the matter is, the confluence issues that happened to my council were based on the fact, we needed to take a huge chunk of money to make our enterprise solvent, because councils refused to deal with it, to make it solvent. And when you have an average income of 23 grand, it becomes a serious issue. Now, I have no doubt, we should have somewhere or another had an increase by now for that sewer fund. But I also have a bunch of issues that I'd like to see answered. I want to know how, if any, money was spent in sewer improvement fund. I want to know, PACE says that plant was built so smart, it was supposed to build, run itself. I want to know where we are with that plant, and what estimations and costs we have going in the future. I want to know, are we going to continue receiving fines? And if so, is this going to be on a regular basis? I want to get some questions answered. I also want to know what INI projects we're doing. That's what a task force would do. It'd go a long ways to get the citizens to believe and understand that the rate price, the rate hike is necessary, but also that council's keeping faith with them. And I want to tell you, after reading Rick's thing, and Dave, you got a copy of this, we didn't want to capture it. He had a few to read. He said he's given a file of captions. I'm pretty sure Mari never got one. I'm pretty sure you did. Do we?
We gave it to you.
Great. And all I can say is, we've broken faith, and it's not going to look good when we go forward on this one.
Broke it for Mari, for you, for everybody. OEM, what does that mean?
Oh, operation and management of the plant.
Okay, and INI, what does that mean?
INI is infiltration and inflow, it's an issue in water incentive hikes, sewer collection hikes, they go to the sewer plant.
Thank you.
Oh, there's actually an operation basis. Yeah, operation maintenance.
Well, I figure there are people that don't know this.
Evening. Council members and state manager, my name is Rick Chan. I've come here tonight to speak about the potential of transferring funds from INI. I had the fortune of being on the water and sewer treatment research task force back in 2010. At that time, we had been faced with rate increases for the sewer at a rate of $10 per rate increases. And then three increases of $4 for the water. It was great, people cried, people were up in arms, and so we had to make it more tolerable. It was a little now to two increases for the sewer increase, which was $5 and $5. The water increase was $5, $4, and $4. And I must say, I salute you guys for having gotten through the 218 proposition process and was successful in raising revenue. Because it's a thankless task, and it's hard to lose. But in so doing, I need not remind you that one of the bedlocks of Proposition 218 is that, "For fees, revenues derived from the fee or charge shall not be used for any other purpose other than that for which the fee or charge is imposed." And our letter, which is our letter of intent to go forward with the water and sewer fee increase, that was mailed to the public. It complies with the Proposition 218 on March 7, 2010. We stated that with regard to wastewater, that we would spend $541,200 minimum for the infiltration and inflow reduction projects, which include the Castle Wall area, the Verne Edith area, the Sherre Avenue area, Dusker Cedar area, Shasta Brastard area, Rover Rose area, Dusker Stagecoach area, Dusker Oak area, Pine Cedar area. To my knowledge, I don't think that they have all been completed, but the point is that under Proposition 218, you may not take fees and then not provide the service for which it was considered. These were specifically put in discreet lock boxes, as per 218, for two reasons. One is that it would ensure that there's transparency, that there was bookkeeping to which these funds were sacred, could not be touched, you could not pay Peter and Rob Hall to fold one fund to the other, you could not mix and match. The second benefit of it was that you could secure loans by virtue of the fact of showing your willingness and ability to maintain those discreet funds. On March 14, 2012, there was an article in which time the city manager, Ron Davis, said, "We are polluting the river. We have a cease and desist order for our sewer treatment plant being sold and efficient." That's one reason why we got this grant, and I'm pointing to the $5.8 million grant that we got from the State Water Resources Control Board. She said another reason was because of the two sewer rate increases, one in July 2010 and the other in July 2011. To qualify for additional $1.4 million debt service, she said, we needed the sewer rates right where they are. We would not have received this grant without the interest. It showed that the city was paying its fair share of the agreement. In her 2010, 2011 City of Dunsmere narrative for the proposed budget for year 2010 and 2011, she stated, "Revenue from rate increases for sewer and water will be separate and stick into their own course of funding funds. The sewer increase revenue will be used for capital improvement only." So we have, we have a process in which the citizens and taxpayers were in a proposition that it could either affect to, or it could be passed by law. But in it, we specifically denoted where each fund of those fees were to be allocated and in that lock box. If we do not keep to that, and we break this covenant, we are in jeopardy of not allocating those funds from which they were initially derived. And so I heartily urge this council to leave those funds alone. And I know how hard it is to find money to make up for, say, poor planning, poor engineering, or lack of ability to see into the future, so few of us can. And there are unforeseen consequences with regard to the upgrading of our sewer plant. Nevertheless, we should keep to our word, our promise to the taxpayers. We should not jeopardize ourselves legally by leasing funds, and we should have a plan for, a detailed plan for it, as we had proposed. We would have projected projects, we would have the departments have updates periodically on where they were, how much was spent, how much revenues are being taken in. This is something that adds consistency and predictability to your budget. You cannot go around mixing and matching, robbing Peter from the wall, and putting mandates on. You have the courage to go through the 218 process to secure an increase. I suggest that's the way to go. And I think that it is possible to get a low income or fixed income fund for loans. But all in all, I believe it's the way forward. It is not to restructure the INI fund. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll close the podium for the comment. First of all, Mr. Abino, I'm sorry to give you the impression, when you just got done, you said a lot, and I saw you taking a deep breath, and that's what the grant was about. No, I understand, and I appreciate your comments. I understand the seriousness of it. And with that in mind, Mr. Brennigan, this is your Bailey Wick. Will you have terms of response?
Well, I'd first like to thank Bill Mario, and I'm sorry I have to...
Rick Chan.
Rick Chan. For all the work that you've done in the past and taken the time to come in here to spread that knowledge to us here. And I've talked to Mario about this at some points prior to this meeting, and I did go back and look for the legal, is this, is this not legal? Would we be breaking the law? You know, so I looked back at the resolutions that we had. I didn't have all the information that was that binder. So if, if there is a concern that there is something that may be of a legal concern, we could table this to give me time. I'd like to get the information that was provided, so I'd love to see if there's anything that may be of legal ramifications. Politically, I could see as well that there's concern about what to do to balance this fund. You know, this is probably something that, as you mentioned, should have been addressed years ago, but it wasn't. And here we are, we're at a point now, we're into September, and we need to close this book. And it's got, the money has to come from somewhere. And we just went through the budget, and as we noted, that most of the funds are in deficit. They don't have the money to lend. The water may have money to lend, or if we look at this sewer improvement fund as a source of lending, we still have to look at creating the lending documentation and the interest associated with that, and it'd have to be paid back. So, and we'd have to hire somebody to create those documents to make sure that they're legal, which takes time as well. Possibly. We'd have to act on it pretty, pretty quick. And then that would mean, when we do go out for the sewer, sewer rate increase, it may be minimal, but that's still an added cost that we still have to account for the rates as well. This, if, I understand more than anybody the importance of capital and the investment in infrastructure. Just like anything that we have, if you don't maintain it, when it fails, you're having to buy new, and that's twice, you know, much more expensive than what you paid for it. So it's always better to maintain. And the only way you can maintain is you have to have a plan, and you have to save for it. And it's a struggle for many municipalities, because nobody wants to raise the rates. And unfortunately, this is, this is not uncommon, what's happening here, where we had the council unseated because of the vast rate increase that happened back then. Of course, you had a lynch mob, nobody, especially on fixed income. How are you going to pay for these things? It's really a travesty. But the best way to keep from having that happen is to have a small incremental increase, just like we do on the building we get at home every day. They slowly increase those costs, and they don't hit you with those large increases. So I know with the current council, that is a preference, I've heard from the council here, that they want to be responsible and, you know, keep things going as businesslike as we can. But unfortunately, we're going to have to address this. And the question would be, what is, is there a better way to balance this account? And I haven't heard, I know you've all said you're not sure how to do it, you know, maybe get a loan. If it's an outside loan, we won't get the lending unless we have the money secured. If they look at the enterprise, it's already running at a deficit, so we can't get an outside loan. So it's going to have to be an inside loan. The only one that can loan us from internal would be the water fund or the sewer expansion fund. And the water fund just started getting back into the black, so we don't have a whole lot of options. And I hope that if, if there's nothing legally that I can see, if it was bonus, and when this comes back to where, okay, it's legal, but politically, it's going to be a potential tough decision, that at least people are, come to the podium and understand where you're placed, that you're in a tough position here, I'm in a tough position making recommendations, because we don't have a lot to choose from. So, you know, what are the options? And, you know, I'm open to hearing, after the council meeting, what other people think are the best options, so I can make the best recommendations for the city council as well. Right now, there's very few options to be able to close, to balance this enterprise this, when we do our audit.
Mr. Abino?
I have a lot to say. And I want to break it down into two pieces. We were already done with the... We were already done with the finance committee meetings, excepted this is fact. Until new information was brought to me. That big binder that Mr. Chan put together, I have read it from one end to the other. Took me three days. And I read it to understand what went into the, why there might be so much dissension about this. And it really came down to not the rate increase, it's breaking the public's trust. I have gone through it with Tom Nollapark. And it seems that no matter how, what kind of agreement you put and you make this safeguard it, it gets broken. The ink was no sooner signed on my agreement that we brought to the city for Tandami Park and the funds to run it, that immediately $11,000 just disappeared. When I questioned it, oh, the city council approved it. In good faith, you know, 218, 218 process went through, you know, different funds were created to safeguard and, you know, transparency of where the monies are going, what they're being used to. Still have to feel questioned on something I had nothing to do with is to where all these funds are going to. I had to deal with, you know, the former city treasurer that thinks that they know, I've been able to placate her because I deal in good faith the answers that I give her. I have totally new information now. And to me, it's a question of trusting. I want to be able to say that this new city administration is transparent. It doesn't do the same things that happened before, that it doesn't break the trust of the people. And to me, this is bad policy altogether, because you're transferring funds, you're doing the same things that happened before. You're just transferring funds without any mention of paying it back, even if it means that there's going to be a little bit more cost to paying it back, but, you know, borrowing it from the, you know, capital fund to bring it over to the, nobody's questioning the fact that it's somewhere, it's become very costly to operate, you know, and we have no money, we are in a deficit position to be able to run the old, old...
And a reserve.
Yeah, no reserve, but, you know, the other fund has the money. But to me, politically also, and not breaking the trust of the people, makes more sense to just, you know, have one fund, loan it to the, you know, to be operating, because the people will see that, hey, we're not just doing, you know, a transfer. And the money's gone. What the fund was set up for, didn't do what was promised, the money's disappeared and we're now going to face another 218 process of raising, you know, we are going to have to do a rate study and raise the sewer fees. I honestly, come now, I can face people and say, oh yeah, all this money that, you know, we had here, what has sort of disappeared because we had a deficit in the operating costs and, you know, you get to the point where you don't have any trust in, you know, where any of your funds are, because nobody keeps their promises. To me, that's what it really basically comes down to. I can't honestly say, I am still so upset about that $11,000 disappearing for an endowment that I thought I had locked down and could not be spent on anything, you know, but, you know, maintaining Tandami Park just because something happened to be called Tandami, $11,000 just disappeared out of that endowment. I can't be upset about that and not be upset equally about this because it's breaking the trust of the people that put it together. And that's what it really comes down to. I don't have an issue of needing the funds, it's how we're just transferring the funds. Because I know a lot of people out there that are still questioning things, and this is going to be just, oh, well, they'll, you know, we'll just pass a rule solution and they're just going to use whatever monies, this and general, I don't know who cares. I mean, they're just going to use the money, whatever money is available. I'd like to see this administration be so transparent and so honest and try to find some other workaround that that stigma is no longer attached to it. Unless, you know, this, this is withdrawn, I am going to be forced to have to vote no. I'm already upset that we are dealing with major financial, you know, decisions and we don't have full council here to vote on it. And I have grappled, you know, since, you know, since I, you know, had, was given and allowed to read, you know, everything in that folder. And let me tell you, Mr. Chan is really detailed and there's nothing missing in that, in that folder. I would either recommend that the city manager withdraw this because otherwise I'm going to, the way is written, I'm going to be forced to vote no on it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we table this until it comes back to us in a different way.
Go here a second.
I need to understand what that comes back to us in another way.
Well, not this way.
Okay. Let me take my stab at it. First of all, have you had, you haven't really had a chance to look, I guess, look back at what the different projects were and where the status of each one is, but I guess that would be a worthy goal down the line, right?
Um, what, it's a worthy goal for sure. The, the issue is resources. And if we're going to do, look at doing a loan, I'm, I'm fine with that. It'll have to be inter, inter loan, most likely from the sewer expansion fund or improvement fund. But I'll have to do a RFP to get, most likely an RFP to get a consultant to do that work. It's more money that'll have to come back to get the budget amended, so that we can hire somebody to come in and do the loan, loan documentation. And then next year, we won't be able to pay it back until we have the rates to properly pay it back. So most likely it won't be, there'll be a deficit spending next year too. So as long as it's, everyone's understanding that there's no reserve in the sewer operation and maintenance, we're deficit spending, we're trying to balance it for the auditor. If we can get this loan in time, it, it'll balance it. But we're going to be deficit spending next year as well. We'll have to do the same thing. So maybe we'll look at doing a larger loan to cover us so that we can get through until we get the rate study done, which would be more than what we're asking for right now. That's just the brutal facts of where we're at.
But it's more transparent, so the only thing I would like to add is this $100,000 transfer would not during the improvement fund in any way should work. There are supposed to be $700,000 sitting in that fund for projects. So transferring $100,000 for operations and maintenance, because rates have not been steadily increased, we are still wanting to be the projects that have been listed. Then the fund can also loan the other fund, I mean, if there is sufficient funds in there, then the loan can be, you know, from one fund to the other. And it's more transparent. It isn't just a transfer funds out with no mention of, you know, we're going to pay back this fund, you know, I know, I realize that it's going to have to wait until we do the rate study, you know, it's going to cost a little bit more, but it is far more transparent and palatable to explain to, to the public. And then, you know, we're facing a 218. We keep breaking promises to the, to the, to the citizens.
Please let me try to try the motion again.
Uh, somebody has their hand up.
If I could, isn't it possible that you could put the price of giving the loan to a consultant and the loan itself, that way you wrap it up and it doesn't hurt the budget as much?
Didn't want to get beaten before.
You can reimburse the fund if you could reimburse it. But it is that, the check you got.
You have a question, sir? Yeah, hold on.
Mr. Chan can I ask you a question, sir?
Well, I don't think so.
I appreciate your time, your foretune, your energy and your effort. Did you vote for me, sir?
Yeah, I voted for you.
Did you vote for me?
Can't ask that.
I, well, because there's a reason why. I consider you one of my constituents. When you stood up there at that podium and you say, "This ain't a good idea," I think that's a part. I read that book. And when you said, "This ain't a good idea," all right. So again, in a matter of time, I want to, I want to make a motion that we table this and show staff can bring it back to us in another format. I don't care how it is, it's just not tonight. So I make a motion that we table this and leave it at that.
Could I amend your motion?
Absolutely. Let's get it out.
And when it comes back, it doesn't come back just in the same format, it's just a transfer of funds. You know, with no mention of, you know, of payback, you know, into the fund, you know, debt.
Okay, I make my motion that we table this and direct staff to reorganize it so that, so that it's not a transfer of funds, just straight a transfer of funds. Is that okay?
I can, I can second that.
Um, so is it stealing the money? Do we have a roll call, please?
No, we're not stealing any money either.
Oh, I'm just directing. I'm just directing. Say aye.
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 Good.
I don't know, I'm a sound speaker, but, you know, my understanding when we had all these rate increases, if the idea of that was the building would be eligible to get grants. Because we did, we did mistake that we were putting our money into it to fix this, but we've never gotten those grants. We never liked them.
We have.
That's why it hasn't been fixed.
There's been a lot fixed.
There's been a lot fixed.
There's a difference between O and M and fixing things too. O and M is the cost of running that company. And there have been incurred costs that, first off, I do want to say, this isn't the city manager's fault. It was, if we would have had continuous city managers, it could have been dealt with years ago. It's not like we didn't know this, this fund was going to run in red. And that being said, there are increased costs with the plant. There are increased costs with going to the river, and there is a water diffuser that is high and dry in a rainy season coming. And these are problems we're going to fix. The diffuser is probably on us. The cost of what's happening to the plant is probably on us. So our, our O and M has to be, we've got, we don't have a problem with the improvement funds. Very good.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Do you understand what is...
Yeah.
Come on, come on. The thing we can't come back to.
Next item on the agenda, bus shelter at Children's Park. Mr. City Manager.
Well, I went to my computer to rebook, asked that Pam be excused, maybe since we're done with all the...
Yeah, she's been, thank you. Have a good evening.
Good job.
Thank you, if you can.
After all your hours.
You didn't, you didn't think it'd be fun to stick around, just enjoy yourself here? No comment.
She's going to throw something.
I want to go home.
Okay, sir.
Okay, here we go. Okay, the next item for you today for consideration is the installation of a bus shelter to be located on the sidewalk in front of Children's Park. Received a, of course, audits from the Melissa Cummings, the Siskiyou County Transportation Service Director, saying that they received a bus shelter. It's one of the nicer bus shelters. There's actually a photo in here that shows that. And the, they're proposing that it be installed at the, in the sidewalk over in front of Children's Park on the south side of the sidewalk. It, it's a large sidewalk, it's nice and wide, it's a newer sidewalk, so it's in good repair. So it's one of these things that would be easy install to have the bus shelter set there. I also worked, last week went around with the Floydworks Supervisor, Bill Willman, and we looked at the bus stops in the core of Dunsmere. And we're looking at, as I mentioned before with the budget, looking to apply grant funds for sidewalk repairs. Well, we're looking at how to tie those sidewalks into the bus shelters as well as a means of getting people safely to the different bus shelters and improve our odds of receiving grant funds as well. So we, we actually went to the site here, looked at that as well as the other ones. And it's, it's a good location. It's centrally located in the city of Dunsmere. It's across from some restaurants and ideal for people to get out there, take their kids to the park and grab what to eat. It's good, I think, good location with the infrastructure, I think, is supportive. Along with the staff report, there is an illustration of what the bus shelter will look like and the specifications of the bus shelter as well. If there's any further questions.
Questions?
Oh, no. I'm all for this. It doesn't cost the city a dime.
What was the voting for the comment? Close voting for the comment. Ms. Shanta?
I make a motion, oh, no, I make a motion that we accept the staff report and, you know, it doesn't cost the city any money, beautiful, and we will have done one more movement of the group.
May I? Would you, you have a motion, team, one second?
Yeah.
No. I want you to, at face, correct what you, because you didn't put in a move to authorize the placement of a bus shelter on the sidewalk in front of Children's Park.
I amend my motion to...
Then I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool. Ms. Mayor, this next item on the agenda, I've been thinking about it before, but the person that brought it up is not present.
I also brought it up.
Oh, you did it?
Yes. It was a joint.
I didn't see your thing earlier. I just...
Well, I, I, yes. I decided to bring up the council's attention, but there's no actual staff report, there's already nothing. I'd like to table this for a different line.
I'll second that.
Before we do that, before I take, I do want to pass on one thing that I did find out. Just want to put out the words so people understand this. We're exploring, as part of an overall look at this, because it are, this is a complex issue, but one of the things we're exploring is that with Airbnb, apparently, there's a relationship between the state of California and Airbnb, which would allow us to establish a relationship and let the Airbnb folks know that we have our occupancy tax and what the percentage is, and also for the T-bid, the 2%. And that according to our understanding of the way it works, once that's given to them and set up, then they will collect that automatically, the occupancy taxes. And the way they explain it, it's, it's done in a way that it doesn't come out of the pocket and have any impact on the people who are hosts and renting their, their facilities. But it would provide the same occupancy tax revenue that we have right now for other forms of short-term rentals. So we'll be looking into that. And so with that in mind, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a little bit, you know, more involved than that.
Oh, it is, without a doubt.
Not just the, the fact that I don't think we're collecting the revenues or getting the revenues from it.
I agree. Okay, next on the list, a Talon Valley Park maintenance agreement.
Oh, God, yes. Finally, after a year.
All right, the, the council has asked me to look into the potential of contracting the maintenance of Talon Valley Park with the Parks and Rec District. Staff met with the Park District staff and we walked the Talon Valley area and worked with them this year, and they actually assisted in getting the Deadwood crew out there this season, and worked in developing the skill reward that we think would be appropriate for the maintenance of the park, which is attached with the staff report. The, one of the things that I put in here, I wanted to... The, uh, one of the things that, that I put in here, uh, and I want to draw your attention to, is the, uh, the, the change where I made a comment about the, uh, impact of the, uh, General Fund, where I showed that, uh, budget, the budget adjustment would be needed of, uh, to approximately $3,000 to the General Fund, uh, as the apportionments for city staff would be no longer there. Uh, but they would be freed up to do other activities. And I didn't go into great details about this. I talked about that the, the city receives money, uh, is not General Fund money. Uh, the money that we receive to do the maintenance out there comes from the endowment. And, uh, that money is intended to go towards the maintenance of Talon Valley Park. One of the challenges that the city has had, uh, in meeting its obligation to provide the maintenance is that we only have two staff in the Floydworks. And I list some of the duties that we have there. Um, and they are largely guided by the, uh, the fires that they put out from the day-to-day type of operations, where they, they priority base their scheduling. And it's hard for them to even schedule what they're gonna do in day-to-day, because the phone rings and there's an emergency and they're off to do something else. Which creates a frustration, uh, to the endowment when they're paying for something and they don't feel that it's, uh, getting them the attention that it should be getting. And most likely, it's because they weren't able to get to it at the time, let's say in the springtime, when it's a little easier to get to, it, it just kind of grows out of control. And then have to go in there and tackle it, which takes place as long or two times as long to tackle it, which takes more of it. So with that in mind, um, we're looking at, uh, using the endowment, not the General Fund money, uh, to put towards the Park and Recs, to have them take care of it. Uh, since they don't have the prices management that Floydworks has to deal with, uh, to maintain this park. Um, and we believe that the scope of work is adequate in what is needed to keep it to the standard of a, uh, a non-manicured, more of a native-style park to, uh, get that done within the endowment budget as well. There would still be some, uh, budgetary, uh, cost that the city would have from the endowment as far as like my time and the minimal amount of Floydworks time that we'd be and do some administration. But the maintenance time, which is the bulk, would be for the Parks and Recs, that way we can see how it works out.
Mark, you want to say anything?
Yes. This is a win-win situation for everyone. And the only, uh, as Mark said, the only impact of general revenue is because the city manager and the finance, Chief Financial Officer has started to proportion the amount of salary, you know, to where they're being spent. Unfortunately, as Mark said, the endowment, you know, the city, you know, went into an agreement with, uh... to take over the responsibility, you know, being funded, but the work never seems to get back. So it's a win-win situation for, for everyone because, you know, the park will look like it was intended to, uh, work. Uh, the very small staff that the city has, you know, can, can put out the fires until we give it, you know, managed. And it doesn't cost the city anything. It never has cost the city anything. Uh, Parks and Rec already can take care of City Park, you know, and Talon Valley is just right there. They'll be able to handle it. So working on this, you know, with Parks and Rec and, you know, uh, I think it's a win-win situation. They can certainly handle it. And, you know, the agreement is only for a year. See how it all looks out. See we all, you know, play nice together. And then we can continue it. They came in way under budget of what we normally receive, uh, yearly. And there's money in there for administering, for the city, so, you know, the staff time that, uh, Mark puts in, it's still being paid for by the endowment. So it's a win-win situation for everyone.
Any questions, Dave?
No.
Open the podium for public comment.
I have a question about it.
Do you have any microphone, please?
Candice Miller, 4324, please, Abby and Tessa. And Horticulturist for the Botanical Gardens, as you probably all know. And when I first started there, 11 years ago, they had three people on staff for Park and Rec, for mowing lawns, removing, uh, you know, we take care of all the gardens, the botanical gardens. We take care of that. And there's a lot of, uh, green waste, um, generated from that. A lot of sticks that fall down over the winter. There's a lot of cleanup to be done. And usually that doesn't get done because they don't have time. They now have one person part-time. And he's keeping the lawnmowers and stuff running with baling wire and duct tape. So my question is, how, are they hiring another person? Are they giving him more hours? Because I'm worried that, I feel like now I have to beg to get the part done that the Park and Rec is supposed to help the gardens with. And I'm afraid that that's gonna impinge on our, our park.
Well, Candice, I don't know how to answer that because the agreement, you know, was actually, I walked, I walked through Talon Valley Park since I know it fairly well, and the intention that, uh, when it was handed over to the city in the agreement. Um, I think that that is an issue that Mark and Mike would have to, uh... All I know is it's a win-win situation for us. I don't know. You know, I'm also concerned about the botanical gardens, but, you know, Talon Valley Park isn't as manicured.
Well, no, and I should have told you, but...
Right, and this is why we're only entering it into a, into an agreement for one year, to see how it works out for everyone. And it might, um, actually allow the Parks and Rec to be able to hire, you know, more so that they can take care of everything. I know that they're very constrained. I, I, I know how constrained the Parks and Recs is.
That's a valid question, though. I mean, they're...
Yes, it's very, it's very, uh...
He's spread pretty thin as it is.
Dale, but see, Dale does a wonderful job. He's one person working part-time with all the work that I'm...
But Dale was involved in this also, when we walked through it a couple of times. And Dale and Mike feel confident that, you know, since it isn't manicured, like, uh, you know, most of the work, if you look at the, uh, the contract, takes place in the spring with the help of Deadwood Crew. Yeah, because they're people hired. So the bulk of the work is, I imagine that it's really going to be in the spring to see how bad the winter was.
Yeah.
And, you know, putting it to bed. And, you know, Mike has total control over hiring the Deadwood Crew. He answers to Mark only on whether the, our, you know, the contract is being fulfilled. Um... And it doesn't require the same maintenance, you know, that the City Park and the, uh, Botanical Gardens do. You know, and then once it gets under control, yeah, and then it's just easy because, like any well-maintained garden, okay, so you should do a little bit of work, you know, monthly. You have a bulk of the work in, in the spring after a heavy winter. And then you have to put it to bed, you know, for the, for the winter. There's nothing much in between. And since we're not requiring manicuring that garden, it's just a matter of now maintaining it. Because we fell, you know, we fell backwards too, because lack of staff, you know, as you well know, anything that grows, you let it go and it just goes out of, you know, out of control.
Right. Well, and when, when that was planned, it was kind of a really wonderful plan. Some really wonderful native plants. But a lot of exotic plants that moved in there.
Yes, yes.
Invasive, and Dale's not a plant person.
No.
He is a Deadwood Crew. And so at some point...
That's right. We had, we had more.
But they work with Tom, that's what it is.
No, we don't. We do not hire, um, Hudson-Bones. We, this is a maintenance contract.
But doesn't Tom go through there?
No, he doesn't. He doesn't have anything to do with that part.
Last time when we got rid of the invasive plants, Tom had a big part in it. I did mine once.
Right, right.
That's why I'm saying...
But he's not, he's not under contract. He's not under a retainer. You know, he has to be paid, you know, to come in. Right now, we have gone, walked through this park numerous times. Though, you know, I mean, I don't know how many, how many people were involved, you know, identifying what, you know, what needs to come out. I mean, there's even in the contract, you know, the biggest invasive plant we had is all those blackberry bushes down there. You know, they got, they got in there. Uh, they'll deal with it, you know, on a timely basis. Um... This is just a maintenance contract. Not a planting, not a expanding, not a, you know, which I used to make, you know, write out the checks every single month to the city. Uh, and that's all this, this, this is just a maintenance contract to just maintain the park. Anything else that we might want to do, you know, beyond that, we have to consider. But, you know, it is something that the endowment takes care of. It has no problem with. The way that, you know, the agreement, it satisfies the agreement that the city entered into. And it satisfies everyone.
Okay, uh, any other public comments? Okay, so I'm gonna close the podium for public comments. Someone has to remark, but they have his take on this and then we'll be back to...
We can just make a motion.
Well, do you have any comments you want to make?
He already did in the beginning. He did in the beginning.
That'll work. All right. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize staff, the city manager, to enter into a one-year agreement with the Dunsmere Recreation Department District for the maintenance of Talon Valley Park.
I second.
Then, motion and seconded, and it's money, right?
No, she's got a voting contract. First in, we'll vote on the money.
Yeah, we have to vote.
Yeah, yay. I vote yes.
Okay, vote yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
We're done. I can say aye.
Aye, okay. We're all good. Thanks. Okay, next last item, the very last item, contract services, GASB and sixty-eight reports.
Okay, uh, before you, here is the request to authorize the city manager or designated Pam to enter a, to enter into a one-year agreement with GovInvest to provide GASB sixty-eight reports for two risk pools that we have, uh, within the city, uh, for a cost not to exceed $1,400. Um, this is, the, uh, GovInvest is the, the firm that did these reports last year. And, uh, what this is, it's a requirement of GASB sixty-eight, which is looking to, uh, transparency, to provide, uh, essentially an audit to look at, uh, the city's, um, liability in pensions. Uh, we have two pension funds. One is miscellaneous employees, and the other one is, uh, public safety, uh, which we have the Dunsmere Police Department, uh, employees from the past that we're still paying on. Uh, so there's still something that we have to, uh, keep as what those costs are, the report for those. Um, the, uh, uh, Calpurs used to provide this, since they're the ones that are paying these funds out, but they no longer provide the reports, but they are required of GASB sixty-eight, uh, transparency. So this is something we have to do. Uh, we're looking to use the same firm that did these reports last year, uh, the same price. They haven't increased their price. Um, and, uh, if approved, we just enter into a, an agreement that has attached, uh, to get their services.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You said that it impacts the General Fund, did that work?
Um, it, it is budgeted, so that, yeah, the cost, uh...
I'm sure then you've gone through it, so it was already budgeted.
It might have.
That's what you understand.
Any other questions for you?
No.
Um, any? Open the podium for public comment. Close the podium for public comment. Give it, take it. Um, we all want to...
It's easy.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter a one-year agreement with the GovInvest to provide GASB sixty-eight reports for two risk pool plans in the amount not to exceed $1,400.
I second.
Yeah.
Vote all, please.
Councilor Shanta?
Yes, Councilor Dreschke?
Aye.
Mayor George?
Aye. That's the last of the items on the agenda. Do we have any items that we want to add or ask for on the future agenda? I'd like to start off by asking if we can have a report from you on, on, uh, feedback on the communications from, um, Barbara Cross, as Mr. Rar put it up. He, there was a communication. Can we have some response on the agenda?
Um, well, I was a little, little confused about the, what, uh, Mr. Rar said in that, um, I don't believe that letter came from the planning commission.
It didn't. It was a random letter that Barbara wrote, sent it to every single board member. It's been answered a couple of times, you know, indirectly or directly, and it just keeps coming up because she keeps getting ears and Peter's ears. I'm sorry. That's the way that works, you know, it works. It's, you know, we have had the city attorney come in here and give a, you know, at a considerable cost, you know, the problems with, um... Code enforcement. I didn't see her in the audience. She didn't bother to come back and listen to what problems we have with code enforcement. But she keeps pushing that, you know, we don't have code enforcement. And code enforcement, unfortunately, to Barbara Cross means that we are not after Mark Juarez and, and, you know, mitigating the hell out of him for, for, you know, two properties.
She had the balls to say that.
Yeah. So I'm sorry. I don't have, you know, a major, you know, uh, to keep answering something that keeps getting answered. And then when we bring the city attorney in here, she doesn't even, you know, come to listen to it.
And I would like to note that when we begin these mission, vision, goal, uh, sessions, these are the exact types of things that will be addressed, is what is the, where, where are we gonna put our limited resources? And if code enforcement is the desire of the community, uh, and backed by the city council, uh, then when the budget comes, those will be the things that you'll look to appropriate, the funds to work, um, that will support what we want to see.
So I sense, I sense the council has no desire to follow up, so I'm adding, holding on the idea of putting it in the agenda. Um, any other things for the agenda?
Uh, we're looking, uh, we're looking to, or I'm looking to bring to council for consideration an agreement with the Siskiyou...
Media Council.
Media Council, uh, a, a contract to get us through to the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we do have the money, or the money already budgeted, now the budget's approved. But, uh, we do have to enter into an agreement. And, and we have, uh, Randy here to answer questions about the live streaming as well. And Big Dave's got a big arm of...
Yes, 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 yes.
We're being televised.
Yeah.
Well, you won't...
Yeah, we go ahead.
Because my, my people want to know what happened. They never want, they, they don't want to say, "Oh, they just forgot it's wrong."
You know, we've been televised.
When will it be?
Um, if you agreed to the contract, it'll be televised not this coming meeting, because you'll be approving the contract then, but the following meeting. You guys never had it in your contract to be televised.
Really?
Yes.
Who filed that? You? Don't kid me.
Uh, have we solved the technical problems?
So we had Brooklyn Cable come out and look at it, and they're updating your equipment. And they're planning on absorbing the costs of that, so it's gonna come across the city.
Okay, well, we've seen it.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Any other questions you wanted to ask?
No, no, I, no, thank you. We look forward to, one, giving you money, and two, making us film on TV so people don't... Um, I would like to ask city manager to, um, maybe look at availability into a little field trip.
To?
That I asked about. It's been a while. I ain't heard nothing.
Box Canyon?
I want to see where that dam, I want to be in the dam so we can ask your questions. We need to be in there.
Can I get into that trip?
You're coming too.
I actually want the trip to Los Freo to happen. And I hope that's...
Well, it never did.
No, it hasn't been.
Not yet. I have a question. Who's Box Canyon?
It's the dam at Siskiyou Lake. Have you ever been to Siskiyou Lake and crossed the dam?
Yeah.
Well, then you stop your car, you just park on Box Canyon Dam.
And that's where the cleanup starts?
No. No, the, the cleanup...
Well, what they're just saying...
Carolyn, you won't be in nowhere near there cleaning up. That's where the extreme hiker... No, no, you, you know, look for flat ground, all right. Me and you, okay?
Okay.
Okay, I'll take you with me.
Me and you, Jerry.
Thank you.